Good afternoon. Today is a regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 19th, 2018. It's 4:30 PM. We have a fairly large agenda item. President Schmidt is not available today. So item, so councilors, we have our consent agenda item. What's your wishes? As Charlie would say.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any of them? I do have one question I'd like to talk to Nicole about on the financials under number 1B. I just noticed that our tack, I'm sorry, our 1A, our sales tax collection is really low for the month of April, significantly lower, even in the last couple of months. Can you just talk briefly about that? What you think is going on there?
Counselor Schultz and other councilors, we, when I get that sales tax number every month, it's just a lump sum numbers all I get. I don't get a lot of detail, nor am I entitled to a lot of detail. If I call, they can't give me a whole lot. In the past, when it's been lower like that and I've called, I've found out that there's maybe a business in town that submitted a large capital tax refund. So like when they have a capital project, they can come back later and submit for a sales tax refund on that project. I suspect that's what's happened. And then each month, they send us a lump sum payment at the beginning of the month, and then like a week or two later, they send enough to balance out the prior month's actual receipts. The one month they sent us, they overestimated and we received a large payment to start the month, and then they had to take it back over the next couple of months. So it lowered those next couple of months.
So you'll be keeping an eye on that for us. And if you see any concerns, make sure you note that for us. So any other questions on consent agenda items? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Item number 2, consider a motion approving general licenses for the period beginning July 1st, 2018, ending on June 30th, 2019. We have basically four items here. A fireworks license for the Dollar Tree, mechanical amusement devices for the Firdworth Brothers Pizza, tobacco license for 225 North Minnesota tree ser- or Cars Tree Service license.
I'll offer a motion approving the issuance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Moving on, item number 3A, from the Safety Commission recommending the establishment of no parking on both sides of North Highland Avenue, 100 feet north and south of Oak Street. Mr. Kaler.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. As the request for council action states, the Safety Commission considered and is recommending that the city council establish no parking on North Highland Avenue, north and south of the Oak Street intersection. That parking configuration was set in place about 10 years ago, prior to the opening of the high school, the ISD 88 High School west of Highland at Oak Street. Since that time, there's been some peak AM and PM traffic loading conditions at that intersection, and we'd like to kind of pull that parking back, so there's better sight lines, so that's a little more safety with regard to the turning movements and walkers at that intersection.
This happens to be up in my warden. I did get a number of calls on this. Most of the people were asking about what else is happening up there. I know there's some talk about a potential of a roundabout and some turn lanes. What else is going on up there?
Mr. Vice Chair, the, Mr. Vice President, the Safety Commission received the North Highland Avenue engineering study that the, that the city council authorized several months ago. They received it at their last meeting. It was rather lengthy and had a lot of appendices and a lot of information. This was one of the recommendations that was in there. So in order to move ahead with something, they recommended pulling back this, this parking situation. And they're going to put it back on their agenda at their next meeting and hopefully have a long-term recommendation to the city council in the near future.
I highly recommend this. I think just it's a major safety issue up in that neck of the woods. So I'd entertain a motion to approve this, or a resolution, excuse me.
I'll opt for the resolution and waive the reading.
Second.
Resolution and a second. Any other discussion on this item? Nicole, would you please call roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 3B, angle parking from the Safety Commission recommending establishing angle parking on the east side of Minnesota Street between First and Second South Street. Mr. Kaler.
Mr. Vice President and council members, another recommendation from the Safety Commission. This is in the same side of the Minnesota Street where the apartment complex is being constructed and hopefully will open in next month or two. Currently, there's parallel parking on both sides of Minnesota, Minnesota in that area. A lot of it was disturbed and a lot of sidewalk redone on the east side. And the president, developer, owner of that complex has requested that we possibly accommodate a different parking layout on the east side. I've attached a layout that we've prepared. Since things have been changed around there, we need to accommodate the ADA requirements for handicap parking. We've got eight regular angle stalls on the east side, a couple of handicap stalls. We've also provided a bus loading area for another mode of transportation. So that would be like the Brown County, I can't remember the name of the service.
Heartland.
Heartland Express or any other bus that could park there, as well as a handicap aisle for that area. So it's actually, I think, one or two more stalls than we're in the existing condition. There's plenty of width in that roadway. We've still got 14, two 14-foot south driving lanes, and we really only need about 10 or 11. So there's plenty of width there. We'll maintain parallel parking on the west side.
Okay. Any question, other questions for Mr. Kaler?
With that being said, I mean, I do like the layout. I think it fits that apartment complex. I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
Resolution and waiving. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, on the call, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on, item number 4A, receive communication from Seth Visser on the proposed relocation and incentives of windings to Lot 1-5, Block 2, Airport Industrial Park, 15 Somsen Road. Do you want to report on this from Mr. Dalton?
Vice President, council members, Windings is looking to relocate out to the L.K. site, and they're looking at the city to identify possible incentives to them and help them apply for some of the federal incentives that are available to them. And so in this letter is kind of just letting you know what they're thinking about doing, so you know you're aware of items that may be coming to you in the future.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Dalton? Now I'd entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept that communication. All those in favor say aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Item 5A, consider a motion authorizing renewed requests for proposals for construction manager services. Mr. Schmitz, come on up. Bring a chair. You have a few items up here, right?
Thank you, Vice President Schultz and councilors. You have before you the first of a number of renew action forms, the local option sales tax extension. I think we're all aware of seven projects. This first action form discusses the possibility of four of those projects being located at one campus, the campus of the recreation center at 122 South Garden, including the addition of an indoor water park, the gymnastics center, the wellness center, and an indoor playground. Those four major projects on one campus, one building, have resulted in staff recommending that we engage a construction manager, as no one on staff has the time to manage four major projects at once. And so we would be, staff will be putting together an RFP, and we'll be going out for, you know, proposals and quotes, bids on this, and it'll come back to the Renew Committee and the city council.
Question I have is, does our renew funding help pay for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. This will be reimbursed through our reimbursement resolution that you've already approved previously.
I'm happy about that.
There's one item I might ask the city manager to comment on. I notice in here, responsible for the architects, engineers, and contractors, but the actual bidding will be through the city, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
The city is the responsible party. It's the only entity that can enter into the contracts. Construction manager would be a representative of the city and would then be enforcing the plans and specs, the contracts. Just a general overview of a construction manager is to, is to work with the architect, to look at cost savings that might be achieved. The architect may say, well, this is how we usually do it, and it costs $1,000 to do that particular thing. A construction manager who, you know, works in the field says, well, you know, here's another way of doing it. It only costs $500, you know? So in that design phase, construction managers realistically are of the most benefit because they're working with the architect to identify ways to do it less expensively. Then while the project is going on, the architect may show up, you know, once a week just to, just to check on how things are going. Construction manager will be there, you know, you know, every day and monitoring what's going on. Historically, you would, you would typically see like the city hires a, goes out to bid for a project, and the general contractor puts a bid in, and they've got the electric, the plumbing, the concrete, all the subcontractors, and you just deal with the general contractor. And the architect shows up. And this is just another method. The idea is that the construction manager will save you money in the beginning by working with the architect, and also save you money and make sure that everything gets constructed as it's, as the plans say, okay? There's, there's no way to know that that's going to happen.
Sure.
You know, you just don't know what the issues that the construction manager is going to, you know, potentially come up with. You could, some material that the city attorney and I have read is that a good construction manager could save you money, and a, maybe a not-so-good construction manager may cost you money. You know, you just don't know. But from the perspective of having somebody on site who knows what's going on, who can work with the contractors and the architect, it's, it's an interesting, you know, way to go on a construction project. I believe the reason we're considering this situation on these four projects is just because they are, it's, it's large scale, and it's all happening at one facility. And I don't know that we have anybody on staff that's going to be able to give the amount of time and effort to monitor all the activities that may be going on.
I agree.
Even though the projects may not all be occurring at the same time. They may be staggered. Two might be happening, you know, one year and two the next year. So it's just, it's complicated at that particular site. There's lots of stuff going on. And this was one of those things where we said, this might be beneficial in this project, but it's not necessarily, we're not looking for a construction manager for the baseball repairs or the modifications to the baseball field. So, you know, this is applicable here, not so much on the other projects. You know, like the Herman parking lot and driveway access. You know, that'll be just an engineer, engineering firm that, you know, will design that, will bid that out, it'll be constructed. You know, it's not that complicated. So that's why the concept is here. But it does require that the city do all the advertising, do all the, accepting of all the bids. We are the responsible party for signing all the bid or the contracts, and the construction manager then becomes our representative to carry, make sure that it's carried out. So that's a long story to explain what that is, but some people, you know, a true construction manager would actually act as kind of the general and hire the plumber, hire the electrician, hire the concrete work. They can't do that with a municipality, because the municipality has to bid out these projects where you don't in, in, in the private world. So we, we have, we don't have a true construction manager program, and that's because we, we are not allowed to by law.
Okay. Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion to authorize the city manager to draft a request for proposal, solicit, receive, and review proposals for construction management services for indoor water park, indoor playground, gymnastics center, and wellness center.
Second.
Second. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Item number 5B, consider a motion authorizing renewed requests for proposals for architectural and engineering services for the Johnson Park Grandstand, Herman Heights Park, and the multipurpose dome projects.
Now, since we, since we just had that kind of explained how we're going to handle that, I'll just authorize the city manager to prepare a request for proposals, solicit, receive, and review RFPs for architectural engineering services for the Johnson Park Grandstand and Herman Heights Park and the multipurpose dome project.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Item number 5C, consider a motion authorizing soil borings at the recreational center Fieldhouse for proposed renewed projects. I think we kind of know what that is, but Tom, briefly?
It's simply to have preliminary soil borings in the locations that we anticipate the additions going, and then that information will be going to the construction manager who will assist in, you know, preparing plans and specs and so on for them.
Never know what's underground, right?
Right.
You never know.
And when we actually design the project, we will probably do additional soil borings exactly where the footings are proposed.
Okay. So hearing that, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion authorizing the city manager to contract for soil borings at the recreational center Fieldhouse to determine if the proposed projects can be built at this location.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Item number 5D, consider a motion authorizing staff to study and report back to the Renew Oversight Committee and city council on the renewed multipurpose dome project scope and location options. Mr. Schmitz.
Yes. Vice President Schultz and councilors, we have for a while now been anticipating and kind of planning and looking at one particular site in the community in partners, potential partnership with Independent School District 88, and that's the new high school artificial turf football soccer field, which would allow a winter-only, seasonal, four-month facility only for artificial turf athletics. And we would like to study and determine if there's another option out there that we'd present to the oversight committee and yourselves about a possibility of a year-round, truly multipurpose dome, in which it would have a concrete floor, and then we could roll artificial turf in and out. So it's truly multipurpose. You could have any type of event, home show, camp show, farm show, car shows, motorcycle shows, and athletic events. And so we would like to study that, look into that, and report back to the committees in the future.
Can you briefly, there was some talk briefly about the cost of, if this was to be built at the school, what the cost was to take it down and put it up. Can you talk about that just briefly, just so the public knows what that?
Certainly. There's cost to assemble the dome after the football season and take it down before springtime. And that can range, you know, to $75,000, 50 to 100 grand, depending upon whether you're going to contract it all out or hire one manager and bring in 80 volunteers to assist with it, or 50 volunteers to assist.
I think that cost is what spurred exactly what you're talking about, is maybe we should be looking at other options.
Yeah, it's an operational cost plus a storage. We would need to build a storage facility, a storage building, to house this for the other eight months of the year.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion to study this.
I'll offer the motion authorizing staff to study and report back to the Renew Oversight Committee.
Second.
A motion and a second, but also reporting back to us, the city council, and Renew too, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing, any other questions on that or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Close. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Now, item 5E, consider approving $50,000 for the construction and location of a kennel for the animal control division of the police department. Who wants to talk a little bit about this?
Maybe we start the description of what's going on. It's just simply that, that originally this project was anticipated to be included in the police fire department storage building, and it was ruled out that it could not go there due to our own regulations that say it has to be so far from residential area. So then we, we looked at the, the city property where the gun club and the compost site is located, currently located, and where the kennel currently is located. And we, we talked to the battery, and they had some concerns and issues about location of where we had proposed, and we worked through that. And it's my understanding that the, that the battery is accepting of our proposed location. And I think the bottom line is that in order to do this project, we'll need roughly $50,000 to finish it. And a small amount is actually coming back from the original project, because it, you know, came in a little bit lower. And even though they, they spent more on the police and fire, because they, they didn't include like security system originally, and they were to use their own budget for that, but it got rolled into the project. So there will be some money coming from the original project to help fund this, as noted here, about almost $7,000. So I think the funding is there. I think the need is there. We've come to agreement on acceptability with the location, with the other entities that are out in that, in that general area. And that brings us to today. And so I don't know if Officer Anderson has any.
We have our animal control officer, Officer Anderson, here.
As the city manager stated, or, and I think Counselor Schultz and Counselor Christian, you've seen our current pound. It is well beyond repair at this point. Last weekend, I was down there taking care of the animals, and I literally had water running into the pound while it was raining. So, and that has destroyed one wall now to the point where it's beyond repair. But part of the 50,000 also is going to be going for new cages, new kennels. In talking with the city manager, we agreed to spend a little extra money on that, so that it will outlast most of us here. We're looking at stainless steel cat cages, probably stainless steel kennels, trying to make it aesthetically look good for the public, to know that if there are animals in there, they're not worried about what kind of conditions they've been in while they're there. And the other thing is, in the long run, these cages will save money, because they're going to last practically forever. So.
And how many cages? I know you mentioned that last time. How many?
Um, we're going to go with 10 cat cages. We do have, a couple of weeks ago, I was completely full. We had every cage in there full. And so we are going to go with 10 cages. And then there's going to be, we still have three, what we call enclosed cages, where we put the feral cats, so that it's a, because otherwise it's a safety issue.
Right. And how many dog?
Um, we're going to go with four kennels right now. We rarely have more than three dogs in the kennel at a time. So we're going to cut back from five down to four.
All right. Hearing that?
Being this is the third time that we bid it out, got the site picked and whatnot, I just want to approve 50,000. I assume we're going to take it out of the 290, correct?
Not 290. It will more likely come out of the general fund.
Of the general fund?
Followed by.
Okay. For the request of 50,000 for the construction and relocation of a kennel for the animal control division of the police department.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion or last minute questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number 6A, consider recommendation from the city personnel committee approving the new position of a planner. Mr. Gromitz.
City council members, the city currently has two part-time positions that are in the budget. They are, I think, anticipated to be at, you know, 20 hours per week, so halftime. So added together, they'd be one full-time. In the past, we had utilized some of the administrative assistance, up to 24 hours, you know, for sure, less than 30, but, but anywhere from 20 to 28 hours, depending on the need. So even, even that is, you know, halftime isn't necessarily actually true. We did fill a halftime building inspector position for about a year and a half, two years. That position currently vacant. We tried to fill both the administrative assistant and the building inspection, a position. We're not able to find individuals that would fit either of those positions. Knowing that the, the need to get the building inspection people out into the field is very important, and that some of the activities that the building inspector performs are more administrative and/or more community development, planning type of duties. We met, the city staff met and talked about the, the needs, and out of that meeting came the decision to talk with the personnel committee about combining those two halftime positions into one full-time position that would be titled planner, and that the duties would be taking away the administrative duties of the building inspector, such as, you know, heritage preservation, the miscellaneous code enforcement things that aren't necessarily building-related. And combining that with the zoning activities to complement the community development office to get those activities completed, we, we felt that that was the way to go. So we took that to the personnel committee and gave the presentation. And as you can see there, the personnel committee recommended approval, approval of creating this new position of planner in the development, community development office, instead of trying to fill the two part-time positions. In addition, you know, we, as the city council is aware, we've been talking about succession planning, where is the next group of people coming forward to fill positions? And that also was a consideration when we, when we looked at this position, albeit it may not be the, the most important part of that decision. But it was part of the decision that the community development director's been here for a long, long time, and, you know, as right now, he's out of the office, and there's really no one there except the code enforcement, building inspector, who, who, you know, would attempt to try and find information or, or answer questions in the absence. So that actually adds more work from the, from the department we want to take away activities from. So with that explanation, the recommendation would be that we would take two, you know, halftime positions, create one full-time position. You notice that the, the economics are that we're looking at a shortfall on an annual basis of about $17,000, which would be addressed in the 2019 budget. For the 2018 budget, we actually would have enough funds available to pay for that full-time position out of the, the funds that have been saved. So there's not a problem in 2018 and 2019. 2019 budget is in process. It'd be one of those items that would have to be addressed. And as we saw the financial reports, if memory serves correctly, this is, you know, just a half an hour ago, we were told that, you know, we bettered our cash position by about a million dollars. So if the same were to happen in 2019, it would be $17,000 less than a million dollars. So I think we have the capability of creating this position, and it does not impose a large financial burden. But that's up to the City Council to decide.
When would you anticipate filling that in 2008, this year, if we were to approve it?
Well, we're ready to go. Both code enforcement and community development would like to see it done as soon as possible. So I would think that we would be, you know, within a week or so, trying to get it cranked out of the office, get it advertised, because it's going to take probably two months.
Councillors?
I'm going to offer the motion to approve the new position for Planner and authorize the City Manager to proceed with hiring process to fill the position in 2018.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion second. Any more discussion on the item?
I just want to comment that I sit on the Personnel Committee, and we discussed it a long time, the financing and, you know, how we would fund it and that extra $17,000. And I know Brian said that it wasn't a big part of our decision, the succession planning, but it is really something that we have really set a goal here to really kind of do is have people in place, if possible, if that works out that way for succession planning. And so I think that's part of the reason why I really support this position, that down the road, I think we're going to have better service for our community.
Anybody else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item on, moving on to item number six B, consider a recommendation from the City Manager approving the change to the organizational structure of the Public Works Department. Mr. Bromitz.
All right. This particular item has been something I've looked at for, you know, many, many years. And, you know, recently, we reorganized the Community Development, Building Inspection, Cable TV underneath the Economic Development Director, Assistant City Manager position. That then, we had created a review of all the positions, I think, when we did the classification and compensation study. And out of that came, I guess, a review of how would we reorganize if we were to. What you see before you on the second page, which is the graph, would be the City Engineer would have the Assistant City Engineer underneath that position, and also would supervise the Public Works Superintendent. This particular format is the general characteristic of most, if not all, cities that are approximately our size, anywhere from, you know, 10 to, you know, 25, 35, 40,000 population, where the street activities are found under the City Engineer. They may have them listed by different titles, but generally speaking, it's the City Engineer because that's the degree that's required for that position. And this helps the City Manager's position, my position, by not having 14 direct reports. When we did the Economic Development Assistant City Manager position, we removed, you know, like four direct reports, and this would remove one more. So in keeping that, this is historically how most cities are designed, and, you know, the Street Department has a direct link to the City Engineer's office. You know, if there's a question on how to fill a pothole, I mean, they're going to talk to the City Engineer. I would be of little or no value if the Public Works Superintendent said, "I've got a problem here with a pothole. Come on out and look at it." So it's more reasonable for this to be in this fashion. This is not taking away necessarily the Department Head status. Still a Department Head, just reports to the City Engineer. So that, all we're really doing is addressing the reporting line. So I guess I would see this as a movement to more standardize what's historically found in other communities our size, and secondarily reduces the number of direct reports, per se.
Sure.
Because if you remember your emergency management, they say in an emergency, three to five people is all you can really supervise, period. There's just too much information coming at you. Well, you know, I'm sitting there at 16, 17 people on a normal day, doing evaluations, all that. This is just one way of reducing that, and it just kind of makes more sense. So, any questions? I'd be open to answering those.
Mr. Kayler, you're fine with this too?
Mr. Vice President, I certainly am. I have no concerns with regard to this reorganization. Helps reduce the span of control, as the City Manager mentioned. My only concern is, I hope you don't expect me to be out at 4:00 in the morning to plow snow.
I think I see that in very fine print at the very bottom.
No, it'll work out fine.
All right, thank you. With that, I'd offer, I'd entertain a motion on this.
I'll offer a motion approving the change of the organizational structure to the Public Works Department within the Public Works Superintendent will report to the City Engineer.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have an effective date? Is that just effective tomorrow? Okay. Just want to double check on that. So the motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item number six, one and two. Consider a motion to receive an annual financial report for the fiscal year ending December 31st. Can we do both of these at one time or separate? Both together? Okay, so the motion is to receive, earlier today, we had a review of the financial report for both Public Utilities and for the City of New Ulm. So at this point, I'd entertain a motion to approve both the financial report for the city and the Utility Commission.
I'll offer the motion.
Motion second?
Second.
Questions on any of them? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item six D, a resolution authorizing the early retirement of December 1st, 2018 through 2021, payments of the general obligation permanent improvement revolving fund bond series 2011A on October 1st, 2018. Ms. Jorgensen.
Councillors, we have the ability with the debt fund right now. We have a large enough balance to retire some of the debt a little earlier, mostly because of people paying their assessments earlier, paying them in full sooner than they need to. It gives us the opportunity to save some interest payments on some of these bonds. So this is for the 2011 bonds, and there's also a request for the 2009 sales tax bonds, so.
I'll offer the resolution authorizing the early retirement of the December 1st, 2018 through 2021 payments of the general obligation permanent improvement revolving fund bond series 2011A on October 1st, 2018.
Second.
Resolution, a second. Any other questions? Hearing none. Nicole, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Or Counselor Schultz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item six E, consider a resolution authorizing the early retirement of December 1st, 2018 through 2020, payments of a general obligation refunding sales tax bond series 2009C on October 1st, 2018. Assuming the same issue.
Same issue. I will add that this wasn't initially part of the renew portion, but by paying these off, we save the interest, and it doesn't really affect the bond payments for the upcoming couple of years because there won't be any new payments on the new debt for another two or three years. So we'll rebuild that balance by not having those payments.
And significantly, we've saved $74,000. That's huge to pay it off. So thank you for keeping an eye on that for us.
With that, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorizing the early retirement of the December 1, 2018 through 2020 payments of the general obligation refunding sales tax bonds series 2009C on October 1st, 2018.
Second.
Resolution a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Nicole, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number six F, consider a resolution authorizing issuance and establishing the terms and conditions of a sale and a set date for August 7, 2018 at 10:00 a.m. and the amount of $2,560,000 for the general obligation permanent improvement revolving fund bond series 2018A, and the amount of $7,55,000 for the general obligation sales tax revenue bonds series 2018B. Anything you want to tell us on that? I'll just say all.
The street bonding, the two and a half million is standard for a year. We generally bond for two and a half to three million every year on that. The sales tax bonds is the first portion of that renew tax that was reinstated or renewed with the last election. There'll be two more issues to get to that full 14 million, but over the next couple of years. This is just the first part.
If I'm correct, we have 18 months used at bonding, the seven million?
Eighteen months spent down, yeah.
From that time?
Yeah.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
Resolution a second. Any other questions? Hearing none. Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item six G, consider a motion to schedule a budget work session for City Hall Council and Department Heads on Tuesday, June 26, 2018 at 3:30 p.m. It's a non-City Council meeting, but we do have a charter meeting at 5, we have a charter meeting that night, 5:30?
5:30.
5:30?
Yeah, PUC Commission meeting at 4:30, so. There's a meeting after, in between the two.
So we got to keep moving along on that.
And I know I will not be able to attend that meeting.
Does anybody else have a conflict? I'm okay.
I'm okay.
What time is the, there's another meeting at 4, 4:30?
At 4:30, yeah.
4:30. So it's only an hour. Is that really enough time to really get into much?
Well, there aren't really any numbers to review at this point. I mean, the departments are just starting to put their budgets together.
It's more of our general topics.
It's more of you putting in your general, this is what I'd like to see, this is what I don't want to see. You know, I'd be comfortable with this kind of increase, or I don't want to see an increase, or chancing for some of the Department Heads to share some of their projects that they're planning, you know, and you to give them direction. You know, maybe we won't support that kind of project, or maybe it's just a very general direction, and there'll be another work session once we have the preliminary budget put together.
Counselor Fisher, how do you feel? Do you want to submit something in writing, or you want us to find a new date?
No, I don't think you need to find a new date. It's pretty preliminary at that point, and...
We certainly would want to know your input on some of these topics if it could be read into the record or something on that day.
I was hoping that maybe I could listen in, but I probably won't even be able to listen in at that time, so.
Yeah, I don't know if we could set up the phone. I don't know, that new phone, the old phone system won't work with the new phone. I don't know how that will work.
Yeah, and I can't anyway, so.
So if you're okay with that, we'll just keep it.
Yep.
If there is a motion for that?
So move.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for, keep that on Tuesday, June 26 at 3:30. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item number six, consider a motion to approve a Spartan ERV contract change order A as specified in the amount of $3,306. I'm assuming this is to our ladder truck, right?
At the ladder.
Pumper.
Probably for the pumper.
The pumper truck, excuse me.
Vice President Schultz and City Council, the Truck Committee sat down with the engineers from Spartan and went through the 180-some pages line by line, and we went through deletions, additions, and clarifications on it. And this was the result. Just to point out a couple of the items that needed to be added, the one is the EVP. If you remember, the state replaced all the stoplights on Broadway last year. Well, those now have the capability of changing to green light with proper lighting on a vehicle. So that was added to this truck. The other is the shoreline, and what that is, is it conditions the batteries, and it keeps all the electronics on the truck charged up, like the hand lanterns, the infrared camera, and the gang chargers that hold all the handheld radios. And then there's also a compressor that keeps all the air runs off of that same system and keeps the air pressure up on the air brakes, so we don't have to sit there and wait for the air to come up.
Makes sense. Okay. Mr. Mayor, we had to get you one of those. If you're in a hurry, we can change those lights, the stoplights, and you can get where you need to go.
Double 6,000.
All right, hearing that, do we have a motion to approve this change?
We do have money in the equipment replacing funds. I'll motion to approve changes.
Second.
Motion a second. Any other questions for our police or fire chief? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item, thank you.
Thank you.
Item six I, consider a motion to approve this authorize the City Manager to solicit requests for proposals for the provision of a local insurance agent for services for policy year, the next five years, 2019 through 2023. Ms. Jorgensen, is this a RFP?
It's just an RFP, requesting proposals for insurance services. It's just giving opportunities to the other agents in town to manage our account. We haven't changed insurance agents for a number of years, so.
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion to authorize the City Manager to solicit requests for proposals, RFPs, to handle the local insurance agent activities associated with the property liability, automobile boiler machinery insurance associated with the City of New Ulm and the New Ulm Public Utilities.
Second.
Motion a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item six J, consider a motion authorizing a New Ulm battery to fire cannons during July 3, 2018 Riverside Park Patriotic Music Event.
I'll offer the motion.
The motion is...
Second.
Motion a second. This is for July 3 again, 2018 at Riverside Park. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item number six K, consider a resolution to accept donations offered to the city or the Park and Rec Department for the Day of Play events.
Again, at the Park and Rec Commission, they recommend that the City Council accept these donations. So I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading, to accept the following donations to the City of New Ulm for the Park and Recreation Department for the following Days of Play events, $250 cash from employees of Hermanich, $250 cash from the New Ulm J.C.s, and $225 cash from South Point Financial Credit Union.
Great.
Second.
Motion a second. Anything, any other comments? Thank you. Mayor, thank you, letters on the way?
Thank you, letters will be on the way. This is a resolution.
It's a resolution. Thank you. Nicole, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes. Motion carries. Number six, where are we up to? Six 100 here pretty soon? Consider request from Herman Heights Monument Society for Herman Fest 2018 activities. Mr. Schmitz.
Thank you, Vice President Schultz and Councillors. This is the annual request coming to you from the Herman Monument Society. I'm not aware of any significant changes from the previous festivals, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Tom Firth, President of the Herman Monument Society, who'd like to address you.
Mr. Firth.
Thank you, Tom. Tom Firth, 1026 15th North, New Ulm. And as Tom said, I am the current President of the Herman Monument Society. I'm pretty much here today to say thank you. Thank you very much for sponsoring our fireworks displays. First one that you approved was in 2009 for the, yeah, coming up on 10 years ago already, for our Herman's Victory Celebration. After that success, we did it again in 13 for the 125th anniversary of the cornerstone laying at the monument and the 150th anniversary of the battery. It was a combined event that year. And from that event started Herman Fest in 2014. And so I'm very pleased to say that... And so, I'm very pleased to say that our attendance has been steadily growing every year. We keep all the food and beverage affordable, so that people aren't bringing their own coolers in. It's, you know, it's city park, so we can't really stop people from bringing their own food in and everything, but, you know, we keep everything affordably priced. And then, of course, the whole event would be nothing without the fireworks display. And every year, I hear people say it was the best one they ever saw. I've heard people say it's like 17 minutes of finale. And just the backdrop of Herman Heights and Harmon Park and the Herman Monument really makes it spectacular. And so, you have all the approval items in front of you, but I'm here today to say thank you very, very much on behalf of the Herman Monument Society. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I think it's well-run, and you do a nice job, and your volunteers just do outdo themselves every year with this. And your children, I know, are there helping too.
My daughter, the root beer girl.
They're the root beer kids, yeah. Even though those bees are buzzing around, they pour that root beer.
Right.
All right, we got a couple of separate motions here that I would... Are a resolution and a motion, if you folks are willing to move it.
Yeah. I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorizing the Herman Monument Society to temporarily close Center Street between Garden Street and Highland Avenue from approximately 8:15 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. to accommodate fireworks discharge during Herman Fest on September 8th, 2018.
Okay.
Second.
So, we have a resolution and a second for this. Any other... Any questions or comments on this? Having none, Nicole, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes. Motion carries. Second one's a motion.
Motion, motion to authorize request by the Herman Monument Society for the following during Herman Fest on September 8th, 2018 in Herman Heights and Harmon Parks. Number one is grant an exception to the city code 8.20 subdivision 3 to allow the discharge of cannons and fireworks during the event. Number two, authorize the discharge of fireworks at Herman Heights Park during the event. Permission is required, as the city is the owner. And then, allow the fire department to remain on standby at the fireworks discharge site should their services be required. This does not include crowd control of fireworks or discharge activities.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions on these three items for this motion? Having none, all in favor say aye.
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 No. All those in favor say no. Motion carries. Item six M. Consider a resolution accepting donations and memorials to the New Ulm Public Library. Good evening.
Mister Vice President, Counselors, April 80 Assistant Director, New Ulm Public Library. The list of donations you have in front of you was through June 6th. Chris Wiley, our library director, last day was June 15th, and so she wanted to wrap up donations and memorials before she left.
Lots of great donations here. Counselors, your wishes?
I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading to accept the donations.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Mr. Mayor, your fingers will be very busy writing... Or do the libraries send thank yous for this?
Excuse me, the library sends those thank yous.
The library sends those. Okay. Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And next one, six N. Consider a resolution accepting donation of landscaping surrounding the Wandagog sculpture from the Wandagog Monument Committee.
On the June 14th Library Board meeting, the library voted to accept the donation of the Wandagog Monument Committee's donation of landscaping in front of the library around the Wandagog sculpture, and they're requesting your approval for that donation as well. With me, I have Diana Lee Schaefer, the President of the Wandagog Monument Committee.
Good evening.
Thank you. I think you have a plan somewhere that you have been able to review. Are there any questions? We do have in the Wandagog Monument Committee account right now $5,100, which will definitely cover the costs of the landscaping in front of the library.
And you'll see up on the monitors now for the folks that are here what this is looking like. And... Okay. Did we get more than one bid, do you know?
We did not, because the... It was the donation, so the...
It was a donation, okay. Oh, I get it. All right. All right. Hearing that, I'd offer a resolution. Accept a resolution.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting the donation for the landscaping surrounding the Wandagog sculpture from the Wandagog Monument Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for the resolution. When would you anticipate this happening, or this...
Tomorrow morning.
Oh. If you don't approve it...
Well, they're permitting. The improvement, it'll happen.
Well, that might mean a couple of weeks, on the way it's been going. All right. Nicole, would you please call the roll on this?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And item six O. Consider a resolution authorizing a grant application for the Minnesota DNR for trap and skeet range improvements. Mr. Schmitz.
Thank you, Vice President Schultz and counselors. You have before you a request to authorize us to apply for a state of Minnesota grant offered by the Department of Natural Resources as a 50% cost sharing for improvements at the trap and skeet range on the north end of town. There's been a significant increase in shooting out there, especially in relationship to youth shooting, as all three high schools have youth sporting clay teams. Sioux Valley Gun Club has a lease with the city to operate the shooting programs out there. And so, with this increased use and need, there's a request for an additional field. There are two existing trap fields and trap houses and one skeet house. In between those areas, there's land available for a combination field, which would be a high-low skeet house, or, you know, a high house, a low house, and a third would be a trap house. I have, you know, all the information here on the action form, but with most recent information that I just received today is the existing skeet house is in disrepair. It's a wooden facility. These new facilities are proposed to be concrete, concrete block. And so, we would like to go ahead and add to the application, replacing that wooden skeet house, which would increase the total cost of the project from 30 to $44,000, which would mean a $22,000 state grant, and then a $22,000 local cash or in-kind match. And our sporting clubs have verbally expressed interest in covering the local match. Sioux Valley Gun Club, the Isaac Walton League, and the Lost Dog and Fox Hunters. So, I would like to have authorization to apply for the grant up to $22,000.
Tom, when you talk about expressing interest in taking care of that cost, it's easy to say express the interest, or yes, I'm for sure going to take care of that. What's your thoughts on that?
I know that they've offered 15... One of the organizations has offered $15,000 cash.
And that was the question I was going to ask. I mean, the Park and Rec Commission was recommending approval. They had the old amount, and then the Sioux Valley Gun Club was going to provide all or some of the local cash or the in-kind match. Now, they're aware of this. The number's going up.
Yes, in fact, they're proposing the change in scope to replace the existing skeet house that's wooden and in disrepair.
And also proposing upping their in-kind donation and cash match?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know this whole program is getting much more popular, and with the high school kids, I know I have some neighbor kids that are really involved in it, and it's just seeming it's really growing in popularity, so.
Yes, and a key component, of course, is firearm safety.
Yep, absolutely.
Significant safety training with these programs.
I did get one call on this topic, because it is growing, and there is more groups that people that love our compost site, and they want to drag their... Because of the time that some of these programs are, the skeet range, that they're not able to bring some of their wood or their branches down to that lower level, because it's all blocked off due to the shooting. Is there an alternative... And that's maybe... Can't answer this now, but is there an alternative site where they could dump stuff off in the... When they do bring stuff down there?
Well, maybe that's a question for the city engineer who's now in charge of public works. Who's now in charge of the compost.
It's tomorrow, I believe. It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow he's in charge. Just something to think about. I guess he just, you know, he's a local guy. He said, "I use the compost site a lot, and I've been... Two, three times I've been down there in the comp..." And then, the skeet people are shooting, and it's all blocked off, and I got to come back. And so, it might be something as we take over that whole site again. If there's an alternative option, we should maybe think about that. Just passing on a comment. Oh, we have... Somebody who would like to speak? Maybe this is the guy. I don't know.
Dan Beaker. I am a New Ulm Public Assistant Coach for the trap team, and I'm the treasurer of the Sioux Valley Gun Club.
Oh, great.
In the past, if you look at the sign, that facility is closed at 5 o'clock.
A little closer to the mic, so people can hear you. Thank you.
That facility's actually closed at 5 o'clock. We actually leave it open unless we're down there shooting, and we'll pull the gate over. But as of the last couple of weeks, they've been dumping brush up on the top before shooting down there. So, I don't know where it goes. It's gone the next day.
So, I don't know if they pushed it down there or not, just so we know as we take it over in a couple of weeks, right? I'm assuming?
Correct. August 1st, we take it over.
Oh, August. I was thinking it was July. Okay. All right. Any other comments on this whole thing that Tom talked about?
No, with the school, the high school shooting more and more, the two traps, we have... This year, we had 49 students for the New Ulm Public School, and we anticipate to have close to 60 next year.
Wow.
The added trap and skeet range would help us to not be out there past 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night.
Right. Great. Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll accept a resolution for this grant application.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorizing the grant application to the Minnesota DNR in the amount of $22,000 for the trap and skeet range improvements with equal amount of local cash and in-kind match.
Second.
Okay. We have a resolution, and we have a second on that. Any other comments? Having none, Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number six P. And the last motion. Consider accepting a bid from GOG Sheat Metal in the amount of $21,800 for the membrane change out and metal replacement of the apparatus bay of the main fire station at 526 8th North Street. Mr. Zabel, anything on that, or any... Anybody got any questions for him? Or make him walk all the way up here, he better have a question for him.
Alwood Zabel Building Official, any questions on the... We're looking just at changing out the membrane over the apparatus bay at the main fire station. The upper roof had been replaced a few years back already. The only unknown is if we have moisture or soaked insulation underneath.
And we do know it's leaking.
We do know it's leaking, yes. This was supposed to be replaced next year, but due to the leaks in the advanced age of the roof, it's deteriorating faster than we anticipated.
So, the last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of buckets around?
Yeah.
Guessing a lot of buckets? Okay. So, we need to get this fixed. I'd offer or accept a motion on this.
I'll offer a motion to accept a bid from GOG Sheat Metal in the amount of $21,800 for the membrane change out and metal replacement at the main fire station at 526 8th North Street over the apparatus bay.
Second.
Motion, a second, and I think as Mr. Alwood said, we did have three separate bids. This was the low bid. So, with that, is that a...
It's a motion.
That's a motion. With that, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries. Oh, we have some others here by our city manager?
Yeah, two items. Just note that in the agenda today, that probably reflected many more pages, is that when you do a resolution, we're going to have a resolution actually attached to the sheet. In the past, you might have said, you know, adopt the resolution, waive the reading. There really wasn't anything there, and we would create that in the administrative offices later on. So, it's not that it didn't get done, it just wasn't at the meeting. That process has changed. We will have a resolution. May not be the final one, but you'll see the actual language. And then, the second item, we have... Are anticipating some things on July 3rd. I just want to take a poll of the city council that's here if there's going to be, you know, four or more present on July 3rd, because we'll need some resolutions and things. And if we don't have four or more, we won't be able to do the resolution. So, the survey is who's not planning on being here on July 3rd. Maybe that's the easiest way to go.
I actually have a commitment on the 3rd.
Okay.
I will not be able to be here.
Okay. Rest of us are here?
Okay. All right, then we'll do... We'll check with Charlie when he gets back.
Sure Charlie's there. Okay. All right.
All right, thank you.
No other agenda items? Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.